Jeffries, the Chair is unable to join us this evening. As such, I, Lou Franco, as Vice Chair, will be chairing this evening's meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open-meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and those that are reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by the open-meeting law. Do we have any public comment from the Board this evening?
I just have one. I want to thank everyone for coming out or watching the Boys and Girls Club Are You Smarter Than Our Sixth Graders this past Friday. I'm very pleased that the winners of the event were our own select Board, Mr. Franco, Mr. Nuzzolo, and Mr. Jeffries, who were the winning team this year, so dethroning the police team who really threw down the gauntlet last meeting. But everybody had a great time. It was very well-attended and raised more than $24,000 for the Boys and Girls Club. So, again, to everybody, you can watch it on YouTube if you haven't seen it. Lot of fun, lot of good questions and answers, and great stories and accounts of what the Boys and Girls Club mean to people who attend. There were two students there who gave their own personal stories, which were always moving, and they were always a good reminder about why the Boys and Girls Club exists and why it's such an important part of the town. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I don't have a public comment.
I'll just add to that. It was, I had not yet been to one of those, so I made it under the wire before leaving the Board, and it was a lot of fun. I was glad I was able to be there. It was, he got me out of the house, I was out with the people, it was really nice. So... Any public comment from the public? Mr. Bowen.
John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. I'm here with G. Marie Price, same address. As this Board is aware, I have mentioned already that I am running for the Cemetery Commissioner's position as a write-in candidate. If I was appointed, we would be in this position as well at some point. However, I would like to quote by Pope Saint Gregory the Great. He developed a liturgy of the Church. He made a statement that was quite profound. He wrote about the kind of man who ought to rule. This is fitting in the situation with the Cemetery Commission. What he said was, "Can the occupation of power distract the mind of the ruler?" This is why I strongly think our present commission is in dire straits. The power. It's an occupation of power. The inermence and personal benefits which have been prevalent in this commission is appalling. Changing a rule to give one ruler power as discretion is too much power, which the new policy reflects. I strongly believe in a Cemetery Commission formation, okay, as a corporation, under IRS Code 501(c)(13) through the use of Mass. General Law's Chapter 114, will allow the cemeteries to receive donations and hold them. I don't know if everybody's aware, but they just gave back $175,000 donation because they can't hold money. And they had no authority to accept money. We should be raising money and applying for grants for all perpetual care and maintenance and burials, and relieve the taxpayer of the $22,000 we give the DPW and pay for those wages to be able to do the work. The town manager should not have control of management and operations, but move the cemeteries into the Conservation Commission as a department. This is an ecosystem we have with cemeteries in this community. The commission should only be managers, oversight only, to the corporation, which will comprise of five skilled directors with experience. We need to stop the patronage of this commission. We need to stop the naming of buildings and structures after town officials. It should always be noted that it should say on the side of any building, "The Town's People circa 2024," because that's who proved and ratified, and every person is important. Every donor and family needs to be treated equally. There should be no discretion. "Well, I'll let you do this, but I won't let you do this." That's my discretion. The family of the interred should be always contacted with a survey about any major projects in the cemetery. The cemeteries need to remain in their present historic condition and remain a green space, no matter the cost of the maintenance, to do so. The rules and regulations and policies created should go before the town for ratification, not just before a Board. The Cemetery Commission has no integrity. I'm not speaking about Mike Clark. And it has come, it has been revealed in that integrity by the condemnation of the town DPW employees and contractors that this commission has engaged. Right now, anyone who told, who is told that they could have a specific-sized stone, I'm going to encourage all those people to make a call, request of this commission to get a larger stone. After all, it is their discretion. Are they going to tell some no and others yes? Let's see. Dave Doran seems to have an awful lot of extra space planting around his headstone, more than everybody else. And it appears that that would be the rule, as much as you want. The Price family presently has space for 132 people. Can you imagine the size of the stone that we're going to need? I'm looking into it right now, and I'm sure that I'll be approved for a large stone to be able to put 132 names, because when Eldon Price bought those in the 1800s, he bought them for the Price legacy.
If you could wrap up in about 30 seconds.
I will. This is my platform. I challenge anyone to debate me. I have a plan. No commissioner has had a plan in any appointment, they have any statement that they gave to this Board even during election. What is your plan, Cemetery Commissioners, is a question that this Board should have asked every appointment, which all these appointments just converted into a one-line vote because there was no challenges, which I know you, Mr. Franco, were, you know, appalled at the caucus. The question the Board should have asked, okay, is this question: Why? Why is there no plan? Not leave it up to me to do it, but now I'll do it. Write me in, John Bowen. I ask for this Board's endorsement. I live at 162 Highland Street. I wanted to be a cemetery in this commission, in this town, to make this commission a corporation, and I would like this endorsement. And again, I challenge Dave Doran and Michael Clark at any point in time to any kind of a debate if they'd like to have one, or any kind of a discussion through Facebook, even though, you know, there's a lot of junk that floats around there. I'll have the discussion, you know, but I wouldn't just say that, you know, I think that the Cemetery Commission itself is a problem.
10 seconds, please.
I think it's a problem, and I think it needs to be fixed. But right now, in its present state, the person that can fix it is Ms. Lemieux. That's the person that can fix it, and there's no action being taken. Thank you for your time.
I would just issue a general comment, just to be careful about, I mean, that's borderline campaigning here, and I don't know that this is a proper forum for that, so, that's all.
Can I just address that? Run for it, please, for one more.
Sure.
I did not come, I did not come here to campaign. I came here because if you go over the entire history of what I have mentioned, over time, with the Cemetery Commission at their meeting and at this Board, is all reflected in the same letter.
Three lines.
Yeah, sorry. And that's, that's what I was mentioning.
All right.
Okay? Thank you.
Any other public comment from the public? Anybody online?
No.
That's it, seeing none. We'll move on. Announcements?
Yes. Just, I'll put this at the front of the meeting. Annual Town Meeting is this Saturday, May 4th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Middle School-High School Auditorium. I would arrive early. We're, we don't know what the attendance will be like. We're expecting a larger-than-normal attendance. Also, we put out a survey on social media. If you could, anyone that's thinking of attending, we're trying to get some idea of how many people are going to go to the meeting, so this will help us in some way to plan for personnel that needs to be there and set up and such. But we have planned everything for overflow rooms and all the proper audio and visual for those overflow rooms as well. Absentee voting. The town clerk asked me to read a notice in the town clerk's office. 2024 census forms should be returned to the town clerk's office by now. If you lived in the town on January 1st and did not receive a form, please contact the town clerk's office at 978-582-4131. Please keep in mind, if you are a voter and have not returned your census form, you will be inactivated. What this means is that if you plan to participate in any town meeting or election, town or state, you will be asked to leave the check-in line and fill out your necessary paperwork. Dog licenses for 2024 were due by April 1st. Please let the town clerk's office know if you no longer have a dog or come in to renew the license to avoid fines. If you have mail payment for your dog license without a stamped envelope to return it, please stop by the office to pick up your license. Lastly, absentee ballots for the annual town election, which is on May 18th, are now available, and you may vote in the town clerk's office during regular office hours. The last day to apply for an absentee ballot to be mailed is Wednesday, May 15th, and the clerk's office will be open on Friday, May 17th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon. This is the last day and hour to vote absentee.
So, yes, can I ask one question? I'm just curious, how many returns have you had on the survey? Do you know?
Yesterday afternoon, about 60.
And were they all saying they were coming?
That was one, two, three, four.
Most, most...
I didn't fill it out. I was going to ask two, but...
What, where, where did it get sent to?
It's on Facebook.
It's just like a Google form.
Okay. I haven't seen it.
Because Facebook no longer allows polls.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I figured people knew I was coming, but this is town's town meeting.
Yes.
I'll be there.
As will I.
We, well, we, we, 7:15, we have the Tollbooth fundraiser. We are one minute away, so if you work your way up slowly, we can actually kick that off on time. That's for the Shriners Club.
Communication from other Boards first?
Uh, we, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. We do not have any communications from other Boards.
We do.
Oh, we do.
Sorry. Please.
Good evening. Mark Burch, 20 Buttonwood Place. I'm the Chair of the Board of Water Commissioners, and I had a few prepared things I wanted to just kind of go over real quick tonight. I realize it's a short meeting, so I'm going to keep it short.
Can I steal that?
Yep. I can't seem to pull it up right now.
And were you able to?
Not yet.
Okay. Well, I'll start backwards then.
You're very, very close to being a regular here. It's a good thing.
I'm trying. Don't, don't even think I'm going to get up on that stage.
No, no. Even people participating is good, Mark.
Well, so in the past, the Board has voiced its concern that the district is not open and communicative, so I'm trying to change that.
You're doing great.
And our meetings are different, they're in different locations, we're posting them now and coming and communicating with the Board. One of the things I wanted to go over, Article 25 at Town Meeting. I had a couple of comments on that, and I just, I know the Planning Board has been going over it. Full disclosure, I have not watched the meetings, but I wanted to give you the Water District's perspective on this article. Previous land use director had brought this article up in reference to restrictions for development in commercial zones, in commercial development, specifically in Zone 2 and Zone 3. So not necessarily the Zone 1. The town's current bylaw would not allow for certain types of development within the Zone 2 or Zone 3. What he was proposing was an adoption of DEP's regulations for Zone 2 and Zone 3 that would allow for certain types of development, along with safeguards in place to protect the Zone 2 and the Zone 3. This was specific to similar development that we've allowed within the same commercial district. So he was looking specifically in the area of Keatings in that Zone 2 and Zone 3. The type of development we're talking about probably currently would not fit within the Zone 2s and Zone 3s that we have on our other sites. This would mean significant commercial tax revenue for the town of Lunenburg. The Water District's position is that as long as they were following DEP's guidelines, we had no concerns over this article. It does not change any current regulatory authority in the district in any way. All of the district's regulatory authority of the Zone 2 and 3 comes from DEP and the current mass, the current Lunenburg bylaw. So personally, I feel that the only thing this article does was, is allow for commercial development within the Zone 2 and Zone 3, implementing safeguards by DEP to allow for this development. And it would also produce tax revenue. So on a personal end, with all the overrides and all the money that we're looking for and increases, I think we should really bring this article up for some serious consideration. I know there's been some feedback on the Zone 1. Take Zone 1 out of it. Just change Zone 2 and Zone 3, because I think it's, it's important for the, for the community, and I think there are some deals in place that will go away if this is not, if this isn't passed. And I, I didn't see it as a significant impact. Were you able to?
Yes.
Okay. The other item I want to go over tonight is, is specific impact to each customer regarding the PFAS treatment plan that we have. I want to go over the exact numbers that we have as of today. No hypotheticals. Basically, what we are looking at today, so the voters can understand on May 16th what they're voting for. So currently, under a 30-year plan for a state revolving fund, the Hickory Hills well will cost each water taker $62.21 per quarter. What we have done is added the Lancaster Ave well to this, and that impact through the SRF funding totals out at $103.79. So that would be to treat Hickory Hills and Lancaster Ave under SRF funding. So essentially, the vote that we have on the 16th is for the $103.79. But if we look at the overall plan, which is to move right into next year applying for SRF funding, which we don't know that we have, but we should treat all of our sources, you add the Keating well to that, under a 30-year bond at 4.25%, essentially, a yes vote on the 16th will cost the water takers, in the end, adding the Keating well $177.23 per quarter. We're still only voting at the $103.79 at the 16th, but the intentions to move forward in the worst-case scenario, if we stay in the timeline that we have, will be 73, 44 for the Keating well. Combined, $177.23. In the end, that treats Hickory Hills, Lancaster Ave, and Keatings. Average cost to the water taker over 30 years is $21,000 for three supplies.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? This, this is getting really into the weeds. I can't even read the document that's being shared. We weren't given it in advance.
I will, we will forward this to you. This is, this is a small clip, and we plan to meet with the Board.
I think, can we postpone till we have that meeting? Because I think the public isn't even aware that you were going to present number, I wasn't aware you were going to present new numbers tonight.
These aren't new numbers.
Well, I can't see them. I've seen so many iterations of numbers and financing options, and I would feel more comfortable having an open discussion. I feel like this is, the public would not expect this tonight. And without having this material, I can't even, I can't, I opened it on Facebook, I can't read it.
Um, I don't have much to close out, and this is stuff, this is stuff we're going to review.
I mean, wrap it up, but I see, I see your point.
I see, I see Ms. M. Key's point.
And, and, yeah, go ahead and wrap it up, but I go, because I mean, it's squeezing, it's stuffing it into the envelope of communications from other Boards, but I see what you're, I see.
It's getting into...
This, this is a condensed version of, of a more broad overview.
Well, that version needs to be announced and...
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I would, I would recommend that we hear the speaker out, and we don't discuss this because that could be open-meeting law issues. But he could certainly present it, especially since he's saying he's close, and we are going to have a meeting with the Water District at their request from last week's meeting. So I, I, I take to heart what Ms. M. Key is saying. I can't read it either. I have very good eyesight, and I can't read it. I hope that, Mr. Burch, that you'll present this, you'll provide this to us. I have lots of questions already that I'm not going to ask tonight, but I think we should at least hear out the...
My intent is a statement and have a summary that everybody can take home and understand. I'm sure there'll be questions after. But my intent was a short summary to go over what we see as for finances for, for a water supply for the community.
So do you want this on the agenda as an item for next week for actual discussion?
Oh, next week and a week after, I think we, we've discussed with the Board. We definitely feel that this is a large issue that, that impacts the town, and we would definitely want the Board to weigh in. I haven't seen an issue in the past with the Water District that the Board has not weighed in on, so I, I'm inviting it at this.
Yeah, I was asking more about the timing.
Yeah.
All right. So you'll be able to wrap up in the next couple of minutes here?
Yeah. So, you know, essentially, treating three water supplies for, for $21,000 over 30 years to the average resident. If there was a no vote, then we would have to move forward, no SRF funding, no guaranteed SRF funding. We are going to continue to do everything we can to curb the costs on this. But currently, no SRF funding. So if we're, we're looking at just Lancaster Ave and Keatings, under 4.25% 30-year bond, it is $167.35 for Lancaster Ave and Keatings, two supplies, over 30 years, $20,000. So my summary is, is, is this, and you can look at this a whole bunch of ways, and I'm sure the Board will have questions when we talk about this in the future. $10 per quarter gives you three water supplies. $10 additionally per quarter. $1,200 over 30 years. I'm not going to, I'm not going to belabor that, I'm going to just leave that. I will have the Water Superintendent forward this to the town manager and, and to the Board as well for review. It is, the plan that we recommend is the best financial plan for the community. There are a lot of other different ideas and plans out there, but that's what we have come up with. I want to talk briefly to redundancy. I think that was another big issue that was brought up, and we'll, I'm sure we'll discuss this further. But there were two big issues from our last public meeting that I took away. And all of the meetings that we had were, were very informative. Everybody has great questions, and one of the things that I think was discussed was redundancy. So under Mass. General Law 310, any person who obtains a department approval for community public water system that relies entirely upon groundwater sources shall provide additional wells, wellfields, springs, pumping equipment, or the equivalent capability of producing the same volumes in quantity of water as its system's primary well. Our primary well is the Keating well. Our secondary source currently is Lancaster Ave. Keating is 1.5 million per day. Keatings is about, Lancaster Ave is about 750. So a little over half. Currently, even though the Hickory Hills well is not an active source, it's still considered a source. Prior to PFAS, if we needed to activate that source in an emergency, even though it had high levels of iron and manganese, DEP would allow it. Now with PFAS, if we do not treat it, I'm not sure they're going to allow that in the future. So that is a, is an unknown, and I like to speak to knowns. That will not give us an equal source to our largest source. We currently, we, we currently have it if you combine the two water sources. So that's all I had on that. I would like to, if we could tonight, set a date where the Water District comes and has a discussion with the Board and reviews the plans that we have and, and reviews any questions the Board may have. I think that this is a very important vote coming up. Some people are voting based on, on finances. I think the engineers we've had and the employees have done a great job in coming up with the, I feel, the best financial plan. Anything else moving forward would be more costly.
All right. So your vote is the 16th, right?
Our vote is the 16th, correct, sir.
All right. So right now, on our schedule, we have the 7th and the 14th, but we have to have a scheduling discussion ourselves about this 7th meeting, which might not be happening on the 7th. We might be, next week's meeting, we might be shifting that. I haven't brought it up yet. So it would be hard to nail that date down with you tonight, because that might, date might not be there in an hour and a half. The 14th is two days before your vote. I mean, does that work?
It's, it's, I, I think it's important to have the, the Boards weigh in and, and have that discussion. We don't have many public forums where we can, where we can talk about our plans and what we're trying to do. As a public official, I don't feel it's appropriate to comment on Facebook on somebody's personal. So we are posting on Facebook, putting as much information out there to try to keep people as informed as, informed as possible. There is a lot of information. I encourage everybody to, to digest it and, and, you know...
All right. So I think it looks like the 14th. It's the only realistic date that we know we're going to have a meeting, so...
Okay. So I will, or will Heather reach out to Fran and, and confirm that?
Or, yeah, second assistant.
And is that something you would feel that you would, I mean, we may ask our engineer to come anyway? Is that going to be helpful?
Yeah, I would encourage it.
Probably, yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we're going to open it up.
As much information as...
So, Mr. Chair, I mean, I will say, notwithstanding the fact that there were some absences that will be on the 7th, I think something of this magnitude that, you know, we're talking about not a couple hundred thousand, we're talking about millions of dollars, to have our initial meeting at the request two days before the, that's not a lot to get any word out. So just logistically, it almost makes no sense to have it then, because how mu, I mean, you're going to give people... ours is on Tuesday night. The meeting is at, what, 6 o'clock on Thursday? So basically, you're giving somebody less than two days to listen, digest, and come back with anything. So if, I mean, my recommendation would be for the 7th, or before, anytime before the 14th.
Well, we might not be able to have that meeting on the 7th for reasons that are going to, that we'll get into, but, I mean, so we'd have to nail down another date, and then you would just have to be there for that date.
We, we, yeah, we're open to another date if, if that's, if that's what the Board wants to do. I think it's important that we let the Board weigh in on this issue, even if it's a day before we have our vote. I, I just feel that it's an important issue for the community, and as the highest Board in the community, I think that, I think it's important to have your opinion.
Let me just see.
And at that meeting, whatever we do, we're going to make sure that not only does the Commissioners and the Water District employees and their Engineers be able to speak as well as us. Obviously, we want, we want to hear, you know, I don't want it to be another two-hour meeting like they just held, but I don't want to have nobody from the public be able to speak either. I want to hear some, from people as well.
I understand your point. I, the, the main purpose is to get, get your opinion.
Yep.
Some of our meetings, some speak... Some of our meetings, uh, some speakers, uh, it does, it, it does drag them along, so.
All right. There's an unknown in the schedule about whether or not anybody else is gonna have this room on the 8th or the 9th. So we just, we can't nail down a date at this very moment. So we're gonna have to, when will you have that information?
We should be able to, by tomorrow morning.
By tomorrow morning?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So we will not have a date
Is the 6th an option? Monday?
Say again?
Monday, the 6th?
Monday, the 6th, or Monday's an option? I feel like that's not a popular meeting night.
I know Planning Board's not meeting until the 13th.
Okay. Monday, the, what, what's not meeting until the 13th?
Planning Board.
I'd rather take some time to make sure that no one holds his meeting on the 13th than try to do that right now.
Yeah, yeah. Let's not nail down the date at the moment. All right.
We can send out something.
So we'll reach out, or Heather will reach out.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Get back on course here. Okay. So there, uh, that's it as far as communications from other boards. Thank you. The, uh, next item is the toll, toll booth fundraiser for the Shriners. Now, they, they're not coming back to re-present. We just, uh, the, the conflict is cleared up, so we're just taking a vote on that. Uh, and that is for, uh, that event date is 6/1.
Yep.
9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the intersection of Mass Ave and Lancaster Ave's. Uh, again, that five-hour period, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We've already had a discussion with them. The only issue remaining was the conflict on the date and it's all, it's all good now. So, uh, with that, unless there's further discussion, I'll entertain a motion on this request.
I move to accept the toll booth fundraiser request for June 1st from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM as presented by the Pittsburgh-Lemonster Shriners Club in support of Shriners Hospital Transportation Fund.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Um, I'm an aye too. Opposed? Abstentions. Uh, okay. It passes unanimously, four to, four to nothing. Uh, it is 7:34. We can move to our 7:30, which is the toll booth fundraiser request from the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg. We have a representative. Please, um, introduce yourself and
Hi, I'm Andrew Woods, 947 Flat Hill Road. Uh, I'm here to get approval for a toll booth on May 22nd from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the center of town. We do have confirmation from the DPW and police that there are no conflicts with this date. Also, I want to say thank you guys for your participation on Friday for the game show. Congrats on winning. Um, and all the proceeds for our toll booth are gonna go to financial aid for our summer program for kids that are less fortunate. Um, yeah.
Any questions?
I do have one.
Yeah.
Have you guys had, is this your first toll booth this year?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Because I know in our bylaws, we limit it to two. So I know that this is the same night as the
I think prom.
The cruise night, right?
I believe so. I'm not too sure on that one.
Cruise night?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I didn't know if you had one already because I know that usually have one around town meeting around this time. So if this is the first one, as long as you don't go over the two, I'm perfectly fine with.
This is 4:00 to 7:00 PM, is it?
Yeah, it's the same night as the cruise night on, on
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just that it's slashed out. I don't know why it's slashed out on this thing. I thought, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed.
Yeah. Uh, I, I thought it was 4:00 to 7:00 PM. It's just that there's a line through it, but I think that's just a stray mark. Uh, any other questions or comments from board members?
Is there, there's a rain date for the cruise night, right?
There was, yes. I don't know off the top of my head, but
Are you going, are you gonna have this?
I believe so.
Okay.
I think Michelle wants to, yeah.
I missed, so what, what?
Because if it, if the cruise night gets rained out, you might not have as much traffic through Townsend.
And so you're just gonna, what are you gonna do?
They'll still have the toll.
Okay, okay.
They'll have it, right?
There's no rain date on the application.
Okay.
So DPW and the police have both reviewed it and there's no issue or conflicts with the car show.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm just putting that out there.
Yep. So unless there are any further comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the toll booth fundraiser request on May 22nd from 4:00 to 7:00 PM for the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? And, uh, it's approved, four to nothing.
Good luck. Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
You too.
Okay, ratifications. Should we do the interview?
We're gonna do the consent.
Yeah, we'll, 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 yes. Okay. Uh, let's hear from, uh, Council on Aging and, uh, appointment, uh, request for appointment of Elena Christopher.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you would just, uh, introduce your name and address?
Okay. I'm Elena Christopher and I live at 91 Autumn Road. And I have, um, been a property owner here for 35 years, lived in the town for 25 and had a business for 22 years. Um, I finally have some free time and I'd like to give back to the community. Um, it, the community has been great and, um, and I've had loyal following in my customers and so I am very motivated to do something in behalf of the, uh, town. And when I was approached about the Council of Aging, um, I have been a, one of pri- a primary caretaker for a very, very elderly person, a parent, and I have watched her over the last 20 years and all that she's gone through with fixed income and, you know, trying to get additional support. And, uh, I thought that I would like, that would be an area where I'd like to, uh, put some time in. So on that, I've decided to put my name in that for the job.
That's great. Any questions or comments from the board?
No, thank you for, for volunteering.
Thank you.
Well, I've known Elena for many years, in a good way. And, uh, yeah, I couldn't be more thrilled that you're, you know, gonna be active in town in a different, in a different capacity this time. I know you'll be just as successful and I know your energy and your passion for doing this, especially given the story you just told. Will be welcome there and it'd be a great addition to the Council on Aging.
Thanks.
No questions here?
I just want to thank you for stepping up. I've already seen you in the habitat once, when at the CAD last Council on Aging meeting, or maybe it was the one before that. And also, we, we know each other just from, you would see me once per year. I wasn't normally a wine guy, but I would go in and buy the same bottle of wine for my sister-in-law every year.
Every sling.
Yes, that's right. That's right. You always knew exactly what I wanted. And you remembered the exact one. So I appreciate that. So that, not that that has anything to do with, that has no bearing on your application at all for the public, just so you all know that. Um, so, uh, so thank you for stepping up in this capacity. Did we have any comments from Debbie Lincoln?
Debbie Lincoln, 46 Hemlock Drive, and I'm the Chair of the Council on Aging. I would just like to say that Elena attended our last board meeting. She fit right in. Everybody was thrilled that she had stepped up and volunteered to do this and we're looking forward to working with her. So hopefully you'll approve her and appreciate her as much as we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, we appoint Elena Christopher of 91 Autumn Road to the Council on Aging, term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, four to nothing. I believe you need to go get sworn in at the town clerk's office.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Now we will do ratification of alternate plumbing gas inspector, please.
Thank you.
Town manager.
So the appointment I'm asking the board to ratify tonight is for the alternate plumbing gas inspector position. Jeremy Pierce is the person I have appointed. Jeremy has over 25 years of experience in the plumbing field. He is the owner of Pierce Plumbing and HVAC and has worked as the plumbing and gas inspector and/or alternate in multiple other municipalities, such as the towns of Shirley, Princeton, Bolton, Lancaster, Lemonster, Groton, and Sterling, all in a part-time as needed capacity for the last 14 years. Prior to that, he worked as a plumber for 10 years before starting his own company. Jeremy is a licensed master plumber, licensed sheet metal worker, and licensed oil burner technician. So I'm asking the board to ratify this appointment tonight.
Any questions, comments?
Sounds like he's ultimately qualified.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of alternate plumbing slash gas inspector, Jeremy Pierce.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Four to nothing. Approved. Ratified.
And the second, uh, ratification I'm asking the board is for Cole Kiefer. He's a returning seasonal lifeguard position, so no further words. He was a good employee that we're glad is coming, returning to the town as a lifeguard.
Questions, comments?
Always glad to see people returning. I move that the board ratify the town manager's appointment of seasonal lifeguard Cole Kiefer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ratified.
Thank you.
Town manager report.
Do not have a report tonight, um, but I wanted to talk generally a little more about town meeting, um, just for the, more for the public to, that the school will be offering childcare services at town meeting and that is being, so Student Council and National Honor Society. Students will be, um, providing those childcare services. I think that's gonna be in the library. There will also be a bagged lunch for sale and that timeframe should be between 11:00 and 1:00 o'clock that there'll be bagged lunches. So that will be a sandwich, chips, cookie, and a bottled water for $7 cash. Um, those were mostly, I think
Chocolate chip?
I don't know about the type of choc- of cookies, so.
Is the childcare something new?
We, I think that was done once before in my time here, but it's so
Understand why we're doing it this year, but is there like any plan on maybe making that permanent?
That would be a school
Yeah.
decision. So I think that is something that they brought up during their discussions this year during meetings.
At what time do doors open? Can people start?
I believe it would be 8:00.
Yeah.
That's when the childcare would start, you're saying?
No. Um, well, it would be around that time and then until, I think, 1:00 was the time they're ending.
Okay.
And we have our pre-town meeting tomorrow. I think, um, Mr. Franco's attending that on behalf of the board. Um, we have a larger-than-normal group that we've included just to go over all the logistics, um, that we've, they've already tested it out and everything, but just to make sure everybody's on the same page as far as setup and, um, where the town clerk will be checking in people, where things will be for, um, anyone, like the water district asked if they could be there for a table to, to provide materials. Um, that check-in for voters, registered voters will first be, uh, sent to the auditorium as we have 600 clickers for capacity for that room and then to the overflow rooms, the gymnasium, and the cafeteria. Are there any questions?
What about parking?
Parking, um, I spoke with the police chief. He is gonna have, uh, someone there for traffic. Um, there'll be multiple officers there. So they'll be directing for traffic.
It's gonna be wild.
We'll see. It could be, it could be, it could be not.
Hard to know.
Hard to know.
Logistically, though, since it sounds like we
It took a lot of planning on, on a behalf of a lot of people. I want to thank those people that were involved.
Yeah, hopefully the plans, and it sounds like it was all well thought out, that these plans are put into some procedural written policy that in case it happens, we don't have to reinvent the wheel and we can say, huh, what did we do here? Even if it's not utilized for all the rooms, at least we know what we want to do and what we have to test and everything. So, good to be prepared.
All right.
Okay. Um, moving on to old business, uh, we have, as you recall, will recall, we kicked the draft revenue, uh, turnover policy review to tonight, uh, giving people additional time. And also, uh, town manager made some adjustments to it. I guess got some feedback on it or
Yes.
Uh, so please go ahead and speak to that.
Thank you. Um, so I did get feedback on, specifically from departments on the threshold, the timing of the turnovers and, um, regarding timing of when the office, treasure collector's office is open. So obviously, um, if it had to be within 48 hours, there may be a time period that the treasure collector's office is not open because they're not open on Fridays. And many departments, um, that first initial threshold would have been met daily, so it would have caused an undue burden on their department of coming to the office daily to do those turnovers. So what we compromised on is the timing, um, was weekly and to increase that threshold to 250. And 250 is what DLS, um, has came back with their draft on the threshold amount as well. So I feel confident that that would pass their, muster as well. The chart just made, um, certain amendments that, uh, for departments that where fees weren't applicable or changed. So Department of Public Works, they don't collect driveway permit fees. They do for those other ones listed, added in membership fees and rental fees for facilities, parks, and recreation, and remove courts fines and administrative surcharges because those, um, don't get funneled through the depart- through the department, actually.
Okay. So other than that, this is all the same as what we'd previously seen, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, any, we do commit to voting on this tonight. Um, any questions or comments?
Nope. I'm perfectly fine with these. The changes made are very clear and very common sense oriented, like that we don't have to turn in fees that we don't collect. That's, that's always a good thing to remove from the chart. Other than that, I'm ready to vote on it.
So am I.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the revenue turnover policy as amended and presented this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Um, there it is.
Thank you.
So this next one, um, is sort of, and I'll be turning it over to you again shortly, but this is sort of like a, a big basket of
Yes, we keep this on from
Big basket of whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever may have come up this week. So if you wish to discuss items from the basket.
Yes. So it's a recurring agenda topic from February till now. There is one change in the consent calendar. The Finance Committee met on Thursday. They voted to remove Article 4 for the prior year expense. So it's down
For the reason I gave at our meeting?
Yes, the four fifths.
Just changes the threshold.
Yes, four fifths full. Um, so it's now just a majority vote.
It's not four fifths. Isn't it prior year nine tenths?
That's for a special.
Ah, okay. Four, wow. They're really lenient on the
Yes.
Four fifths.
So we're down to 11 articles under the consent calendar. The prior, uh, sorry, budget adjustment article, that's finalized with a number. There was, um, and this was discussed throughout the budget season as far as once we knew the number from Personnel Committee for the amount that was needed for fiscal '24 for the Salary Administration Plan Wage Adjustments. So we have, um, most of the funding within the existing salary reserve account. We need an additional $13,573.73 and that will come out of the regular reserve account. So it's just a transfer from the reserve account to the salary reserve account. And so the total coming out of the reserve fund and going to the salary reserve and snow removal is $239,573.73. is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-three cents.
Those are the only changes?
Those are the only changes, and that was just calculating, it was discussed, just a final dollar number needed to be calculated. That is all I have for.
Okay, so that's just sort of FYI, we don't need to do anything with it.
Yes.
Okay. All right. How about status update on capital plan projects for FY twenty-four?
That is in your Google Drive, with its own folder. I can do kind of a high level if you want to start with and not go through every single one.
Thank God.
So for starting with the oldest, from fiscal five to twenty-one, most of those remaining projects have been completed and closed out. Some of the funding sources are going towards the fiscal twenty-five capital plan. So really, what's remaining is the kitchen remodel for the senior center, and that the facilities director will be continuing to try to complete. Monit Tech wasn't able to do the whole project, but they could remove all cabinets. So the facilities director is going to be working with the company and do that work. And now we have a second facilities staff member on board, so hopefully that will help with getting projects done in-house as well. And the chimney repair old article, that's been put aside for the town hall building envelope project. That's on a future capital plan, so we had just reserved that money for when that project goes out to bed. Any questions on that, those years?
Nope.
Going to the next fiscal twenty-two. So most of those projects have, either the equipment's been ordered, or the project's been complete. The, some, you'll see remaining lines will be going towards other projects within the fiscal year. And the two main ones are the Ritter, the ADA ramp and envelope repairs to that building. And the facilities director is working on that bid package. So that did go fully through the APDC, get approval, and now it's at the point of developing the bid specifications. And the town hall, same with that, that is within the bid specification phase.
It says here that the six-wheel dump truck should be received this March. Did we get it?
No, so that, sorry, didn't update that. I think it is now June.
Of course.
Fiscal twenty-three. So it's going to be the same for the ten-wheeler, you're going to see, I think that's June as well on the fiscal twenty-three. We have some remaining projects, some have been completed. The Page Street culvert construction projects, that's substantially complete, just waiting on the as-built for that project. And we have the town hall repairs project, that's interior work to be done to the town hall. The public safety building engineering design for drainage, senior center HVAC updates, and Brooks House, and the senior center roof replacement, and the major, and records retention of the major ones out of those, all those projects. The ADA patio project, that capital line is, that's fully expended, completed. And the generator that was awarded, the generator came in, actually, early, it was supposed to be coming in, in May, and came in April, but it did not come with the fuel pump that needs to be, and that's backordered until September. So they're going to do all the preliminary work for all the conduit, so they'll be ready to go when that.
So we'll have everything run, we just won't be able to generate.
Right. Yeah, but at least it's September and before winter, and when will we need a generator?
A fuel pump, you say?
There's a fuel pump that goes with the generator.
But, but like, it doesn't come with the generator?
No, they're two separate pieces.
Okay, all right, I was going to say, that's kind of an odd, all right, okay.
That come separately, yeah.
All right.
Well, to riff on the theme, did we get the ten-wheel plow and sand, sander, which was due in March twenty-twenty-four, or is that also delayed?
No, that's what I said right before we started going into this, that that one, I think, is June as well.
Oh, okay. One day.
The survey study on the Flat Hill Road Drainage was done last week?
Yes. That was just survey on the detention basin.
With McCarty?
Yes. Through McCarty, is their subcontractor. I haven't seen a report. And. Fiscal twenty-four, not much change in fiscal twenty-four projects. The one change is North Fairfield Culvert, that's, was awarded to the Beta Group. They're doing that project that will fully expand the twenty-five thousand in that line item, and that's all.
That's it?
Yes.
Any questions, comments?
No.
Okay. All right, so still under old business, we have a discussion, we had briefly discussed last meeting, the PTO request for the experience award. And I just didn't know if we had any further ideas on that, that people wanted to offer.
So I thought about it a little more, and I think I have an idea of what the actual request could look like, that I just wanted to, you know, bring up with you guys. So for the select board member for a day, if we were to do something like that, I think the way that it would actually look is having some sort of award that is for specifically, ideally, like, public service of some kind, so like volunteering or extracurricular activities, like student government or something like that. And we can give these awards out to maybe like five students, and then create name plaques, and then invite people in to present the award and give them maybe like ten minutes to come up here and maybe like introduce themselves, speak to the work that they did that helped them win the award, give a little speech or something, and then vote on something, kind of like a joke. I think it could be a fun idea, I don't know, and maybe we could invite the state delegation, that's something that they'd be willing to participate in, but that's really the only way that I can see like that actually being a thing, select board member for a day. I don't know, just wanted to throw that out there. And, oh, sorry, one more thing. I did think a little bit more about the tours, because we did sort of discuss that a little bit. And I don't really think that should be something that students get as an award, because if I wanted to tour like the US Capitol Building, for example, all I would have to do is just submit a form on the internet and get one for free, because it is, you know, a public building. So maybe there's a way to, once every year, have sort of like a class-based tour that's not really connected to an award or something. But, I don't know, just throwing that out there. If that's something that people would be willing to do.
But.
What ages?
Tour.
Yes, that would be part of it.
No, I mean, I mean this year.
It's a public building, theoretically, like, you know, we could just do that.
Well, although, although there is, that has to be done.
You wouldn't be able to ask that as a public, it would be a special privilege.
Oh, of course, it would be like a tour, but I'm saying that like, you shouldn't have to win an award for it, is what I'm saying. Like a class should be able to just maybe have a tour.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, this is just sort of where, what I was thinking about when I.
Good question, I don't know.
Yeah, I think if more than six people went up to the steeple, it would probably collapse.
That's what I worry about, the weight capacity.
Yeah.
If you go on a tour, a lot of, you know, a lot of other buildings, you don't get up to go to the towers, because they're cramped and they're steep and.
Right.
Yeah, so I think that would be a special thing.
Yes, I do, that.
The only, the only thing is, and, and I say this because, again, we have to be conscious of this, you know, it clearly is not ADA compliant, so if the person who won this had ADA issues, we would not be able to do, we would have to do a video tour. Just because, again, there is no access to there, and even then, as somebody able-bodied, sometimes I wonder why I continue going up there, so.
And the clock is very cool, but it's not very glamorous going.
Yeah.
No, it's not glamorized.
So what do you guys think of the select board member for a day?
I like that. I like the key, I like, I like town manager's idea of presenting them the key to this town.
Yeah.
I think having them open, open a meeting by reading the address, or maybe reading an article or something, I think would be good. And I think the name tags, your idea is a great idea, so.
There's, speaking of the key to the town thing, because I have a couple of fake keys myself in, in the house. We have like a replica Bastille key that George Washington has at Mount Vernon, things like this, so we have these keys. But the museum in Concord probably sells like brass colonial-type keys or something, if we wanted to do that as a symbolic key.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd be willing to go retrieve those.
I think that'd be a cool package.
Yeah. No, that makes it sound, I think, more cool, you know, that, what you kind of presented there. It's, it's, because I was trying to figure out like what would, as Tom pointed out the other day, that's not even fun for a selectman being selected.
Yeah. And it's also like, I, I think the potential to scare people away from, you know, government and public services there, too, because you never really know what type of public comments are going to take place that day.
Honorary chair of our next dog hearing.
Yes, no, good. Yeah, we could bring in a stuffed animal, yeah.
Yeah, your money's worth, that's, that's two hours.
Yeah, well, hopefully, people would be kind of like, you know, cool about making public comments and stuff. But, you know, I don't know.
But I think, I think if we do that, if we're going to have them speak or anything, we should, we should give an age category about who this is for.
Yeah, I imagine this as being, you know, junior high, junior or, you know, senior high school, not something for. But I don't think there was an age specified.
No, no, but we can, we can specify an age, so.
I guess it kind of went without saying.
Well, I think building something around what you're suggesting, I, I'm for building around that and exploring that, you know.
Well, we have to commit to them, I think, and then we can build, you know, we can assign somebody to do it. But I think, I think they're looking for a commitment that there is something to do.
Tonight, you're saying?
Well, I, the, the cruise night is when they're going to have this.
Twenty-second, so it's.
So it's quick, tick-tock, tick-tock, so.
Yeah. Well, are we prepared?
It's like three weeks from tomorrow.
All right.
That's it?
It's three weeks from tomorrow.
Didn't actually realize that it was for that date, so.
Yeah. Well, I mean, do we think that this idea is sufficiently concrete at this moment to?
Well, I think details need to be worked out, but I think it sounds like we're all generally supportive of doing something.
Oh, yeah, we're definitely supportive of doing something, so something built around this idea.
Yep.
Okay.
They'd even pull out the gavel, have them gavel in a meeting.
Where is the gavel?
In, it's in the drawer.
I should have brought that out.
Yeah, Mandy said we can specify the age range of the winner, if we like, so.
Yep.
So is there only one winner, or is that also sort of up for us to decide? I'd have to go back.
Yeah, one winner, I think it makes it easier.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, I'm definitely supportive of it.
I am too.
You know.
Yeah, I, yes. So I don't think it needs a formal vote, I think we're.
No.
We're there.
But we should communicate with Mandy that we are willing to do that and.
She may even be watching.
She may.
Okay, so that's, Renee, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah.
You're good, okay. All right, so great, that's good, thank you, Caesar, for that idea. I think, I think it sounds more exciting the way you fleshed it out, so.
Yeah, it really didn't sound exciting at first.
It's good. And where are we now? Okay, so current business. Disposal, review disposal of surplus property policy. Did you want to speak to this, Madam Town Manager?
Well, thank you. So you'll actually see two drafts in your, so I've already revised it in one day.
Which date is that?
The thirtieth.
Okay.
Draft number two, right?
But at draft number two, I would look at.
Oh, I missed that part.
The first draft, in the definition, I, I think, the overall, it made it too wordy with having surplus obsolete replaced throughout. I think it can be condensed in just defining surplus to include those terms, because surplus is the word that's used in Mass General law that requires this policy. So that's what this all stems for, we're required to have a policy for any disposal of items less than ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars and more, we have to procure that or bid that competitively with an advertised procurement process. So I've reviewed a variety of different towns' policies, and this also kind of follows what we have been doing. We use Munis bid as our public auction site, and that's worked well. It's really easy to use, it gets it out to a whole host of people, anyone can go on there and submit a bid. It has timelines built into it, you put in your description, pictures. It's really useful to tool for this and is approved by the state as well as a public auction site. The, it also addresses if there's no bids through Munis bid, how those items are disposed of. So the first, it would be, we'd try to garner some value through scrap, or we would put it through recycling. And then the board would have the option, if we cannot dispose it that way, through a nonprofit or other governmental agency.
No, I see there is no letter number, number three for ten thousand dollars or more. Is there any reason for that?
That is because that strictly follows Mass General law as far as how that's bid. So we have to follow competitive bidding process for anything with a value of ten thousand or more.
Okay, but if, what hap, I mean, okay, with the procedures in, so they, they have some way to, if you don't get any bids, what to do with it in that paragraph? Okay, fair enough. That's the only question I had. I'm just sorry you couldn't fit it on one page, you should reduce, you should reduce the type size.
I can widen the margins.
It could feel like real corporate America, if it's more than one page, I don't read it.
Yeah.
Any other questions for comments, board members?
I'm not looking for the board to vote on this tonight.
Yeah, right, I don't think we could, I mean, yeah, okay, okay.
Well, the fact that I'm not voting on it, then I think it's great.
Yeah. Yeah, plus I read the second one later, and I, I've only been through it once, so, okay.
I don't know, I mean, again, I don't know that there's much to discuss beyond this. I know that you're not asking us to vote on it, but, and I'm fine with it going to another meeting. I guess we should, we should get the chair's opinion as well, but, I mean, it seems about as straightforward as they come.
Okay, we'll just kick it forward. Do we have any minutes for tonight?
No, there are no minutes.
Okay.
No minutes, no warrants.
Uh, warrants?
It's not a warrant week.
Oh.
It's around a bi-weekly schedule now, so that, depending on your meeting next week, we'll be contacting you to, for signatures.
Okay. So action items, we need to be talking about the timeline for town manager evaluation.
Yes.
So I'm off the board in two weeks, two and a half weeks. So what is the proposed, Madam Town Manager, if you want to speak to this a little bit?
We usually start talking about the timeline early in April or late in March.
Yeah. Yep.
And so kind of, we're past that. And my contract says we start the process mid-April and complete by the election unless agreed otherwise, which I'm obviously agreeable to at this point, because we're not gonna make that.
Right, but I want to make sure we don't lose Mr. Franco's evaluation. I don't want it to be a four-person evaluation, because we couldn't plan to do this at the right timeline. So I think we should need to get these forms out. It's not my authority, but we should get them out as soon as possible and start writing them and have the Town Manager, who has nothing to do from today now and Saturday, I'm sure, to write her self-evaluation.
Yeah, I, I agree that it should be input from all existing board members currently. So we have to be aggressive about it. I don't know specifically what that looks like, you have a proposal on a timeline?
I don't, I'll have to look at last year's timeline and what, what we built into for, once the forms were sent, how much time you were given. I think it was at least two weeks.
Yeah, so, yeah, of course, we usually vote on the consolidated two. Wow, yeah, this is tight. Okay, I, I mean, obviously, we're not moving it tonight, but we have to get a schedule and get this nailed down and do whatever we have to do to get it done.
Last year, you guys did start before the election, it was finalized afterwards, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I think that had a lot to do with the tax assessment issue.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, any other thoughts or comments on that process?
The whole process typically takes a month. You don't have a month.
Yeah, no, I know.
So, yeah.
We, we have to just condense it.
We have two meetings, you have two meetings left.
Well, from what I'm understanding, for some reason, we're not having a meeting next week, is that it?
Well, we do want to change the day, but I think we have to have a meeting next week. So let's get, well, actually, any, well, we'll get that in a second. Let's, let's, any committee reports?
School committee meets tomorrow.
So we had a request, as you saw, Mr. Chair, from the Finance Committee about the financial impact of the senior tax relief.
Yes.
So I think we need to get that to them. I, I have not had the opportunity, but I think, we need to know how many people are partaking of the relief now, that's a prerequisite for doing the relief that we're planning, so that we can tell them what the impact to the taxpayer is to shift that tax burden. So we need to get from the tax, the tax assessor, what, how many people last year partook and to what degree? And just assume that we will match those.
Did you have, like, a worksheet that you're working off and you can just plug in?
We didn't.
Okay.
We didn't, it was, it was, I mean, the real, the real issue, to be very honest, Madam Town Manager, is that it's so minimal, I mean, literally so minimal, that we're not offsetting, like, I don't think we, we gave more than $10,000 or $15,000 in tax relief, spread over the whole rest of the town, comes to, you know, I don't even think it registers as a dollar on everybody's. So we didn't do a formal sheet. I, I, I realize that probably that was, would have been best to do it, but, again. But we don't come anywhere close to the 1% of the budget that we're talking about.
Right.
Which would be 400, I mean, right now, we're talking about that we could possibly do $400,000 would be the maximum, but we don't get anywhere close to that.
Yeah, and plus, we, we have the cap, too, right?
That's what I'm saying, the cap is 1%.
Yeah, and, and.
So at the most, it would be $400,000, but that's, again, that's if everybody, many, many more people participated than already do.
Yeah. The thing that confused me about the question a little bit, I mean, is that, like, when we went before the Finance Committee last year, last year, to explain the whole senior tax relief thing, I mean, we, we kind of drilled down on all of this discussion, and that it would be revenue-neutral and all of that, but I guess they're looking for the specific.
Well, yeah, they, I think they understand that it's revenue-neutral. They want to know, for those people who are not benefiting from the relief, how much is it extra they have to, that they're gonna pay?
Fair enough, yeah, fair enough, yeah, okay. Okay.
So I think there were like 30 applicants.
Yeah.
Last year, at 750, I mean, it was like, like I said, under 30, under 30,000.
So.
One of us should try to find that out from the assessor's office.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Well, we can, we can have a rock, you know, rock, paper, scissors after the meeting, but which one of us does that?
Okay, all right, sounds good, all right.
You triggered something for, I just, I know the board is aware, actually, Mr. Alonso and Mr. Franco are aware, that the bill is on the governor's desk, but there was a conflict within two sections of the bill as far as residential was referred to in Section 5 of the bill, so that had to be stricken. And then, so it is going back to the House and the Senate for that revision, as well as Section 2, Paragraph 2, had a misspelling of Lunenburg, so.
Well, that'll hold up.
That has to be corrected. But I have talked to both Representative Keschmerich and Representative Scarsdale. They're well-aware, I sent an email to all three of, or two representatives and senator, giving them a copy of the draft letter from the governor's office with what that amendment looks like and the reasoning behind it. So they're, it's on their radar, and they're gonna be on top of it when it gets to the respective divisions.
Do we, is there any kind of a projected timeline as to how long that will take to go through the?
They don't think it will be that long, knowing that it's kind of a minor amendment.
So I imagine, yeah, I mean, it's, it's just complete, it's still implementing the intent entirely, just to make that absolutely clear to the public. But it, it's, I mean, maybe, I don't know, maybe they have these sessions where stuff that needs these minor amendments, they just take like, you know, a Tuesday morning and do that stuff. I have no idea how they actually do it on the Hill, but, but, darn, I was kind of hoping this thing would be signed in the next couple of weeks, but, I don't know, I don't know how good that looks at the moment, but. Okay, well, whatever, as long as it goes through, thank you very much for the update and for remembering to bring that up, so. Okay. So scheduling. There's a, we, Michael Ray would like to, he wants to be present next week at a meeting. What's his earliest available, it's Wednesday?
Wednesday.
So he's asking about shifting this meeting to Wednesday or Thursday. Next Wednesday, the seventh meeting.
What is, what is Thursday?
Thursday is.
That's the ninth. There's something else, I think, going on on Thursday. Maybe not, maybe it's the following Thursday. I'd rather not have it on a Thursday, I'd rather have it on a Wednesday.
Bocce.
What? I don't know, trivia, but.
There's, I don't know if, if Finance's meeting Thursday, I tend to doubt that they'll call a meeting right after town meeting and take a little break, but I can find that out. That would be the only use of this room.
The school committee meeting next week on Wednesday?
They're meeting tomorrow, so it's usually first and third.
Yeah, I don't think so, I don't know.
I mean, I prefer Wednesday over Thursday.
Yeah, me, too.
Wednesday, I think zoning is in this. I think they're in this room for a hearing.
Signals.
Yeah, their meeting's posted already.
Who's this?
The zoning board.
Yeah, that's on the, that's Wednesday, yep. The, there's nothing on the Thursday, except you're saying school is on Thursday?
No.
No, it's on school.
Okay, well, there's nothing on Thursday, well, there's AP, DC, but it's not here.
Finance is the only person that usually uses this room, if, but I can check with them.
I doubt that, you think they're gonna be meeting right after town meeting?
I doubt it.
Yeah, they're probably gonna be just chilling for a bit.
Taking a little breather.
Yeah, so, I get, I mean, what do we say, the ninth pending no conflict? Can we do that?
Works for me.
I guess.
Okay. So pending no con, you know, confirming that there's no conflict, the ninth at seven.
Okay.
So.
Is it not possible to get a different room on the Wednesday?
On Wednesday? It's gonna be limited.
Especially if that would be the meeting that we have, the Water District here, right?
Well, I think that should be almost the only thing we have, unless, because it'll be after town meeting, so, you know, shouldn't be anything pressing, because it's gonna be, you know, people are gonna want to talk for at least an hour, just on that, probably an hour and a half.
Yeah, I don't see how we could do that anywhere other than this room.
Well, we could do it, we could do it in one of the media rooms of the school.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
But I don't know how many people will attend, I mean, again. I don't know either.
It's not live, right?
What?
It wouldn't be live, then?
Yeah, they've done it.
I think you could do live.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, yeah, I've watched the school committee meetings live. So, well, what do we?
This Wednesday's a little easier for me than Thursday.
High school community room. A little wizard, just a little gnome just texted to me, so. High school community room. Where is?
That's one of the collaborative.
It's one of the media, one of the collaborative spaces, where the school board has some of their meetings.
Okay. You're saying do that on Wednesday instead of doing a Thursday meeting here?
If we're all available on Thursday, I honestly would prefer having it here, where we normally have it. So there's no confusion about where we are.
It's not as easy for me on Thursday. It's doable, but it's.
I will be here, I prefer Wednesday, but I will be here, you know, of course, I would be here on Tuesday, but that's a different story. Nobody else will be here on Tuesday.
Monday or Tuesday are actually the best days for me, but.
So how are we, how are we leaving this? Thursday will be the preferred date, but, well, it's, it's not your preferred date, but I mean, overall, because it would be in this room, secondarily, we would try for Wednesday.
Schedule-wise, I think one, independent of the room, schedule-wise, Wednesday is better.
You say Wednesday is better?
For me.
Okay, and Wednesday's better for Tom?
Well, that's just a preference.
A preference. I mean, I'm totally okay with relocating it, you know, if, if you are. Maybe they should relocate.
And they, if it's posted already?
I, I'm kind of joking, but I mean, they can repost it, I guess, because they're within, you know.
The issue of what's, the Water District meeting and, and the proposal of their article for their special meeting is, if, if people want to come, they will find out where it is. There is no chance that people are gonna come here and be like, oh, my God, you know, I didn't know it was here. We'll make it very clear, and we'll put it out on the town's website that the meeting will be with the joint meeting, and, you know, people will post it. I don't think we're gonna have a problem. The people who are following it closely will know where to go.
Yeah, fair enough.
All right.
All right.
So we're leaning toward Wednesday, we're saying Wednesday?
We can do Wednesday.
Wednesday, if the collaborative room is open, otherwise, then Thursday.
Okay.
And I texted the Finance Chair to see if they're meeting next Thursday.
Okay. No, they are, you're saying?
I said if they, yeah, I haven't heard back yet.
Oh, okay, okay. Where is he?
Faster.
All right, so, with that, okay, so we also have a meeting on the 14th, and that's my last. And you guys have a meeting on the 21st. So with that, I'll move to public comments, starting with the Town Manager.
I do not have any public comments tonight.
Any public comments from the public?
None, um, zoom.
No hands raised, okay. Public comments from the board.
I encourage people to come to town meeting on Saturday. It is one day a year that we know exactly when it is, every year, first Saturday in May. And this is the way to participate in your town government, and I would highly encourage people to put, take great advantage of that opportunity.
Mr. Lozola?
I don't have a public comment.
I'm just gonna build on that, too, on Mr. Alonso's point. I wish town meeting were always packed, but it definitely, probably will be packed this time. There's a major issue on the agenda with the override. And people on both sides should come and speak to it so that a broad base of the town, a broader base than usual, than we usually get at the town meetings, is making this ultimate decision, which is a very, very important decision, no matter what. There are very good arguments on both sides of the issue, but it's a big issue, period. So I would encourage people to engage in it. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Nope, go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.